Okay.
We're gonna start without counsel. You have one more minute and then we're gonna start.
Mike's the lawyer.
Yeah, Mike's the lawyer. Oh. That's my lawyer.
Yeah.
Lawyers.
Going in today.
Everybody's passed the bar here.
Beautiful, Mr. ...
All right.
Lawyers and business school graduates down there.
You know that?
Got sixty seconds and he'll be late.
You got all your solar projects done?
Or thirty.
I ain't out of...
He was always the one who was late.
You know that's... I don't know, we gotta... Six feet.
That big when they went there in...
Porterville. Long Orangeville.
Yeah.
Well, that is.
Got another one in Porterville.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, November twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen Planning Commission. Roll call.
Dong.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Elliot, absent. Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Eliana.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Norman, he actually advised me he would be up.
Okay, please stand and join me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. League ball, yeah. As American as baseball. Uh, this is the public comment time. At this time, members of the public, and John Elliott is here, thank you, John, may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented on this item cannot be discussed by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up before the Planning Commission. So, all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the commission may be limited discretion of the chair, that's how long you talk. And, um, at all times, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. For you, maybe who've been here the first time, that's the microphone that you use over there. So, anyone who'd like to come up at this time and comment on anything not appearing on our agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that to my left today is Aaron Box, senior planner, standing in for, sitting in rather, for Charlotte Persuas. And to my right, you probably know Will Jackson from County Council.
Welcome, gentlemen. Okay, I don't see anyone, so we'll move right along to the approval of the minutes. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I think they had a motion to approve November thirteen minutes.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Dong.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elliot.
Absent.
Diaz.
Yeah, yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Abstain.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Uh, we'll go to four A, which is the consent calendar. There's only one item, and it is a category exemption and tentative parcel map. And it's on State Highway sixty-three south of Cutler. So, is there's anyone who'd like to comment on this?
This is a routine matter, it's just a mere resigning of a resolution, there are no new issues.
I was just gonna ask my fellow commissioners.
Routine matter.
I know they're supposed to call ahead of time, but there was no comments, okay? So, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Uh, roll call.
Dong. Bailey.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Uh, yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to public hearings, item five A. Surface mining permit and reclamation plan amendment, PMR eleven dash zero zero one, Hunzucker Mine, Saker Mine, excuse me, Hunzaker. Uh, Timothy Edward and Janet Hunzaker. And we'll go to staff report. And there's actually two motions on this, so...
Morning, uh, Chairman and Commissioners, Henry Dong with the Resource Management Agency. Project I have for you today is surface mining permit and reclamation plan number PMR eleven dash zero zero one. The applicants are Timothy Edward and Janet Hunzaker, and they're with us in the audience today if you have any questions for them.
It's a fairly small mining operation, where they're only taking, as it says, twelve thousand cubic feet per year?
Um, the existing permit is for fifty thousand cubic yards per year, and then they're adding an additional five thousand cubic yards of recycled material to be processed on the site.
Continue, I just look like a fairly small operation, so...
Yeah, it is. So, the, uh...
I mean, it's a lot of work, don't get me wrong, but...
The project is located on the, uh, west of the intersection of Drive one fifty-two and Johnson Drive, about three point five miles northeast of Rosy. Uh, it's located outside of any urban development boundaries. Project is located on a, an existing surface mining operation, which is on the western sixty-acre portion of this one hundred and fifty-three acre parcel. The project site is owned, uh, Foothill Agriculture. Properties to the north and east are owned Foothill Agriculture, and properties to the south and west are zoned AE twenty. Surrounding properties are agriculture and rural residences, and the property access is from Drive one fifty. So, the project is an amendment to an existing surface mining operation to allow the processing of mined, deposed granite and gravel to be processed with recycled concrete and asphalt. Project is located on approximately three acre portion of the sixty-acre mining site. The amendment also will amend the starting operating hours from seven AM to six AM. Final reclamation of the mined land will remain as open space and grazing land as previously approved. As mentioned earlier, the existing permit allows for fifty thousand cubic yards of mined material. The proposal is to allow five thousand cubic yards of additional recycled concrete and asphalt. The mined material will be hauled over to the processing equipment and, um, and processed with the mined material for a total of seventeen thousand five hundred cubic yards of rock and recycled material. Equipment used on the project site will include a bulldozer, loader, dump trucks, crushing screening equipment, a truck scale, and overhead spray bar. Proposal is expected to add an additional twelve truck trips per day. Maximum depth of excavation will remain as previously permitted. Excavation slopes will remain as previously permitted. Reclamation will, slopes will remain as previously permitted. And financial assurances have been established in the amount of twenty-four thousand six hundred for reclamation. Here is a, here's the site plan for the project. Mining will take place in the northern portion of the mining area. The crusher is towards the middle of the project site. The scale and stockpiles will be towards the entrance at the south of the project site. And if you can see, there's a, the truck route where the trucks will be driving around the site is, enters the south of the project site and then goes around the crushing area. Here's a more recent aerial of the, uh, of the site area. The crushing equipment there is in the middle. This is a view of the, um, of the project area facing the road to the west. And here's a visual of the project area facing the road to the east. So, the project is in compliance with the Tulare County general plan and the zoning ordinance. Project meets after twenty-five of the zoning ordinance, which establishes requirements for surface mining operations. Project is in compliance with ordinance code seven dash two-five-one-zero-two-zero, which allows crushing equipment on surface mining operations. Staff consulted Office of Mine and Reclamation, who had no comments for the project because they determined that the project is not a substantial deviation from the existing reclamation plan, and so approved administratively by the county. In compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, a mitigated negative declaration was established for the project. The MND determined that the project had no substantial environmental impacts with mitigation measures to cultural resources. A health risk assessment was conducted with the, with the Air District to determine if sensitive receptors were affected by particulate matter, and Air District determined that there was no significant impact from that. During the thirty-day review period of the environmental document, we did not receive any comments in opposition of the project. So, staff's recommendations is for your commission to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and a conditionally approved surface mining permit eleven dash zero zero one.
Thank you, Henry. At this time, we'll open the public testimony. Anyone who'd like to come forward and testify, or give us any new information, you're invited to come up at this time. Sounds like you've been a really good neighbor, 'cause otherwise we'd have had the room filled with angry people. So, I commend you for running a nice, clean operation. If there's none, um, I'll move it on to the, my fellow commissioners. Go ahead.
Henry, may I inquire why the hours were changed from six in the morning to seven in the morning? It doesn't look like there's any neighboring dwellings around there.
Yeah, the applicant requested increase the operating hours to start earlier.
From seven to six.
Initially, it was seven to six.
Six to seven, I was gonna say, why did they, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'll go ahead.
The letter from San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution says that there was not enough information for them to make a determination, and how was that?
Oh, yeah, that was, um, that was a letter that we received during the notice of preparation, and so we worked with the Air District to address their comments, and that's why we did a health risk assessment analysis for them to, to analyze particulate matter.
Yet. Yes, Henry, with the addition of the crusher, are we confident that we're gonna be able to keep the noise levels at the seventy decibels at the property lines?
Yeah, um, I utilized the information from the, uh, the noise element, and they did a analysis on similar equipment, and the equipment produced about seventy decibel levels. So, that's kind of acceptable within agricultural zones with a conditionally approved permit.
Right. How close does it, it looked like it was out quite a ways, is there's, how close is the closest neighbor?
Oh, um, let's take a look here. So, there's a, a shack, a shop to the very south of the project, um, but there's no residence there. I don't know if I can do the arrow there, right here. This is actually a shop, not a storage area, so the closest residences are in these areas here.
I know from other mining operations, if we, if they're making too much noise. Yeah, no, I agree. And you say there weren't any comments from the neighbors, right? Okay. Other comments? Close the public testimony, move on to the Planning Commission for, I guess, a motion, we have two motions. I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the mitigated negative deck as the proper document for PMR eleven dash zero zero one. Roll, oh, I need a second.
I'll second. Okay.
Uh, roll call.
Dong.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Aguilar.
Yes.
And then we'll go to the second motion, please.
And then... Motion, we conditionally approve the surface mining permit for PMR eleven zero zero one.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Dong.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
And skip, that's how we do things at Tulare County.
I'm impressed.
Thank you.
Now, if this was an airborne meeting, I guarantee you, we'd have some comments.
Our, this is our councilman from Tulare, so, thank you for coming. He's here to support his in-laws, nothing to do with Tulare, so... Move on to item, item five B. Final site plan, PSR thirteen dash zero zero six, tentative parcel map, PPM thirteen dash zero three zero. Four F Ranch, and James Whitten is our consultant, and we'll move, start with the staff report.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner, and fellow commissioners. My name is Andrew Pacheco, I'm with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency. I'm the project planner for this project right here. Give me a second, please. There we go. This application is for the division of land in the PDFM zone, which requires the final site plan approval prior to the tentative parcel map. The applicant is requesting to create a home site parcel from ten point two-three acres. Okay, the provisions that allow this is that in the PDFM zone, section eighteen point seven C of the zoning ordinance, you can't divide the property unless you have the preliminary approval of the site plan first before you go on to the tentative map, as per section sixteen, G two-three and four. That's a typo right there, if you notice that. The site itself is located on...
Andrew, say that one more time.
Oh, which part?
Error there was?
Yeah, the error there, if you notice, up on top, where it says the procedure set forth in paragraph two, three, and three, that's supposed to be four. Okay. The site is located on the west side of Road two forty-two, at the northwest corner of the intersection of Road two forty-two and Avenue two thirty-two. The site is located outside of any urban area boundaries. Go on. Wrong way. And it was noticed in the Visaeo Times Delta, which is a judicial paper, and that was done November fourteenth of two thousand thirteen of this year, and there was no responses from anyone, no phone calls, no replies, so there was no comments at, at this time. The site is fairly level, it's planted in an orchard, and the applicant wants to divide this home site right here, which is five point, excuse me, zero point five-seven acres, so it's a little over half an acre. He's proposing to sell it, he does not want to do anything with residential, he's interested in the agricultural portion of the property. Lindsay Strathmore Irrigation District provides water for them at this time for domestic use, and also provides irrigation water. The new parcel will not have domestic water from the district itself. They are not allowing any new water connections to any new housing on parcel two, which is the larger piece.
Henry, is there a domestic well on there now, or they're gonna have to develop one?
Uh, they're gonna have to develop that. They're gonna, the talk is that they'll propose a new well on parcel two for their domestic use, but they're not gonna have any new connections, according to the Lindsay Irrigation District. The site is zoned PDFM, and the surrounding areas are also PDFM. There are no other zones. Now, this is in the general plan of the Foothill Growth Management Plan, and the designation is Valley Agricultural, although it is a valley extension within the Foothill Growth Management Plan, and it's in the Round Valley Corridor. This is the site as you see it here. The proposed plan shows that the home site has just taken out the house, the garage, and then the rest of the property will be utilized for agricultural, which the owner plans on selling. The home site, not the property itself. There are no waterways crossing over, um, the line is fairly flat, there are no wetlands. Wait, that one. There are no endangered species other than the stripe adobe, um, brodia, um, excuse me.
Is that the brodia?
Not a brodia, it's a lily. It's a lily. Okay, but there have not been any identified on the property, it's just within the area, oh, that parcel. Okay, it's designated, there has not been any sightings or, or known specific findings on that. It's just the general area of that. Okay, this is a gap, it shows that that is, um, orchards and vineyards and field crops. Actually, this area right in here is all orchard, it's not half and half. If you look at the aerial photo, I'll show you later. And now, this is the home site, this is the northeast corner of the home site that shows the house is gonna be divided off, there's a garage in the back and a house. This is the southern limits of the home site, so he's not taking anything out of the agricultural, it's just the house itself, nothing more than the house. This is what the rest of the property looks like, it's all, olive orchards, and there are no other buildings or any structures on the property other than the improvements of olives and agricultural use. This is the southern limit, southeast corner of the property, and as you can see, this marker right here, Avenue two thirty-two, comes across, but it doesn't go all the way across, it's at that intersection. The recommendation is to approve this application. Title twenty-four, section one three zero, uh, one five three zero three, class three, category exemption, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act or the State of California guidelines pertaining to the limited number of new structures, facilities, or structures, and approve the final site plan, PSR thirteen dash zero zero six. Now, the third item is the same thing, it's only a parcel map, so there's two motions on table. The alternative would be to approve it. The subject with modifications through additions or delineations of the conditions as discussed, move to deny and direct staff to prepare findings for denial to be brought back at the subsequent hearing, or refer back to staff for further study and report. And that would conclude staff's report.
Thank you, Andrew. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing, and if we have questions of staff, we can go back to that. But I'd like the consultant to come forward and talk to us, Jim Whitten, so... Essentially, it looks like you're the only one here that cares.
Uh, Jim Whitten, business address is one fifty West Morton in Porterville. Here representing, I guess it's Four F Ranch, Chris Fazano. I wanna make, I guess I need to make sure you understand the whole water situation. There isn't existing domestic service for the house. The Grove has an irrigation service, so there's no well on the Grove site because they have Lindsay Strathmore irrigation water. In the event there's ever a house built on the nine acre parcel, they will have to drill a well for domestic use, much, well, it's the same everywhere in LSID. And new houses require an individual well, unless they're in town, they have some domestic service in Strathmore. But it's not uncommon, I guess, for anything in Lindsay Strathmore or Parabella Irrigation District, which also serves limited domestic water. So, I, like I say, the, there is no intent to build a house, he's a, he's an out-of-town owner. He doesn't, he doesn't live in this particular area, so he's, he's just a, yeah, I guess, a farmer interested in the agricultural portion of the property and not the house.
This is a domestic service, you're saying will continue to service that house?
Yes, yes. There is a, there is a response to the referral from LSID in the, in the information packet that indicates that the domestic service will... Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Whitten? If not, thank you. Move on to close the public testimony, and this time go to the commission's pleasure. If they have any questions of staff, now is the time, or otherwise I'd ask for a motion.
I move that we approve the categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. Oh, that's what, yeah. And the state guidelines pursuant to all facilities and structures.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Dong.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you, James Whitten.
Here, Mr. Mayor. Second motion. Second motion, uh...
Oh, there's a second motion to approve the parcel? Do I have a motion for that?
I also move that we approve the tentative parcel map, number PPM thirteen zero three zero, and waiver of final map.
Second it.
Roll call.
Dong.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
I didn't have that on my...
Wasn't that on? I didn't have it on there, but we did it anyway, so that's okay. It wasn't one motion, it was two motions.
It was two motions, yeah.
And it was approved, although the letter reflect that the agenda didn't show that. Okay, moving right along, go to item C, special use permit, PSP one three dash zero five seven. This is for an expansion, it's actually two motions of the county yard on, which is known as South Lover's Lane or Road one forty, and we'll go to staff, Anna, please.
Good morning, Chairman.
That yard has been there forever, so...
It has. Going to hopefully get some improvements. All right, the item before you is a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and special use permit number PSP thirteen dash zero five seven to allow the expansion of the Tulare County Central Road Yard located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Road one forty and Avenue two fifty-six. An environmental assessment and initial study identified potentially significant effects on the environment, and a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program were prepared, indicating that although the project may have a significant effect on the environment, mitigation measures were incorporated into the project that would reduce any impact to a point where clearly no significant effects on the environment could occur, and there is no substantial evidence that the project, as revised, would have a significant effect on the environment. The MND had a review period of thirty days, which began on October eighteen, two thousand thirteen, and ended on November eighteen. Entitlement for this project is found in section sixteen of ordinance number three fifty-two, which allows fire stations and public works maintenance facilities in the AE forty zone subject to approval of a special use permit. As mentioned, the project is located on the southeast corner of Road one forty, which is Lover's Lane. And, did I go the wrong way? There. And Avenue two fifty-six. An aerial view, the north half of the thirty-eight acre site is being utilized for the county road yard and provides facilities for traffic control division, soils lab, mechanic shop and offices, county motor pool, agriculture commissioner's office and warehouse, animal control, and gasoline and CNG fueling stations for county vehicles. South half of the project site, which is this area... is the proposed expansion.
May I have a quick question?
Yes.
On page five of the Table of Context, Figure 2, got the word rudural on it. I'm not familiar with that word. Could somebody help me over there?
Yeah, that refers to the type of biology, the upland slopes, rudural, meaning agricultural. So it's agricultural in nature.
Okay, thank you. I just had never seen that word before.
It's very commonly used in biological studies.
Well, you know the stuff I don't read.
General Plan Consistency Analysis found the project to be consistent with the general plan update 2030. And the project site is Zoned AE40 and surrounding properties are Zoned AE40. The surrounding properties contain agriculture and scattered rural residences. Proposal was consistent with zoning. This is a view of the existing road yard from the intersection of Road 140 and Avenue 256, looking kind of southeast. Site plan. This area on the north portion is existing and the area on the southern portion is the proposed expansion. The expansion will occur on the south half of the 40-acre parcel and will include a new transit operations facility, county fire facilities, sheriff's office evidence storage facility, increased parking and storage and associated infrastructure and stormwater retention basin. This expansion is necessary in order to accommodate the growing transit service in the county, provide fire training and improve fire response time, and provide an incident command center for major countywide emergency situations that may arise. The expansion will also increase the available parking and storage areas for road equipment and sheriff's office evidence storage in a secure location. Another aerial view. This is Road 140, looking north across the proposed expansion area. And this is Avenue Road 40, looking east at the division of the two areas. And this project was noticed according to the law. And staff's recommendation is in two motions to first adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And secondly, conditionally approve special use permit number PSP 13-057 and adopt a resolution establishing findings and conditions of approval for the project.
Thank you, Dana.
Welcome.
At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who'd like to come forward and address the commission, we'd like to hear from you. Give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David Cox. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Ellie Cook Company, located 26333, Road 140. I'm the neighbor to this site, the only one with open ground there.
You farm quite a bit of acreage and it's a tree nursery.
Farm around 800 acres in that general area. This site, I do not have a general objection to the site, except that we are a commercial nursery. And as such, in order to achieve certification with the State of California, we have two ways of doing that for nematode certification. One is to fumigate the soil with chemicals. The other is to grow the crop for two years in the ground, then root sample it, and if you find nematodes, destroy it. So basically, everyone fumigates to avoid that. Over the years, we've farmed there since, I think, 1972, 1973. I think we've been there a little longer than the county road yard to begin with. I don't believe anyone objected to the original site with what was put there because the rules for all the chemical uses were different at the time, and no one thought they would change. Well, they have changed. In fact, I fumigated that site to the east of the county road yard this summer, or rather, this fall, and I could not fumigate at all. I had, because of setbacks, because of occupied buildings. All I'm asking for in consideration on this is that as you go through this, you keep the buildings to the west half of the property and nothing on the east half of that back 20 acres there, so that I can farm the parcel next to it in the manner that I've been used to.
I have a question for you because the sheriff's department, for a long time, has been looking for a storage yard for, you know, all the stuff they collect. So do you think that would be a problem if it was, if there's no one occupying it? I mean, don't you give notice before you do that? So it's a, it's a matter of people working there eight to five?
No, it's a matter of an occupied structure. Because the county ag department uses that front building in the front, that one little corner there, because they occupy it one day a week, I had to set back into my property because of that. So if it's a storage building, no, there is no.
Okay.
Currently, there is no restriction for that. But I do not know what the laws will do going forward.
What's the distance, then, you need to be from the nearest building?
Depends on the products used. And as you may have noticed, those are changing. I'm allowed to use methyl bromide because I'm exempt from the Montreal Protocol, which is a different thing you don't want to know about. But at any rate, we are. And so if I were using that product, it would, could be anywhere from a 300 to 600-foot buffer zone. Using Telone, which is a product I use this time from an occupied building, I believe it is 300 feet at the moment. But that is under review by DPR right now.
Okay.
Could you say again why you have to fumigate? I know it's a state regulation.
State regulation for nematode certification. As a commercial nursery, if I sell trees to farmers outside of the county, I have to certify that they're nematode-free.
Gotcha.
And I cannot do that except by fumigating or by root sampling. And no one in my business wants to root sample because you have quite an investment in the plant.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. So give us some dimensions data on the distances from buildings to his, Ellie Cook's property.
Perhaps Aaron could help. This is the retention basin here. And I believe this is the sheriff's evidence storage area here.
You'd have minimally at least, at least, at least a couple hundred feet in between the east side of the property, judging from the detention basin and the sheriff's storage yard and also the fire training ground to the southern area. So we can verify the actual footage. And we, we're still in the design phase of this project, that that is possible, that we could accommodate if necessary. But at this point, I, I don't think any of those buildings that are sited here are going to have common usage. So there, there should not be people in there. And I think that a notification program would be beneficial to us to make sure that during those times when you do spray, that no one is within those areas.
Please come to the mic. Come to the microphone.
Yeah, well, even a soil injection, something that we can work out as far as a program to assist us if no one is out there while, while that is occurring.
Cover the field with plastic and then he pumps it in underneath.
No, actually, this is, this is a broadcast application, just ring rolled behind it, no tarp on it with a Telone. So you have off-gas issues that you have to address, which is why you have the buffer zones.
And I'm not comfortable with this project at this time. And we have a couple of farmers here. And you'll be able to come back if you'd like to address this. So we're just going to take it to the planning commission. So Nancy?
I'm, the big question is how far the space is between where they're farming and this project? You know, I don't know if it's, if he's close, if it's way off. You know, are you farming right up to the back of that property? That's a problem. And, and exactly what he said in, in the directives, it doesn't say, like, I know what Aaron was saying, well, we'll make sure there's nobody in there. In the directives, it doesn't say that. It says a occupied building. It can only be occupied once a week, but that's considered occupied, right?
That is correct. The requirement for Telone right now is seven days unoccupied, which the county ag commissioner's office would not meet.
Right.
That's why I had to set back right now. And frankly, I wouldn't have had too big a concern with only the one little bit there because it's not a big piece that's left out. But if there's more buildings put there, it'll be a bigger piece and the ground becomes unusable. To me, you guys might as well buy it.
We should.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, let's see, I'll, I'll close the public testimony. And I'll go to my fellow planning commissioners. But I'm not comfortable with the project right now to make a decision, so.
Under the right to farm, does that take any effect or?
Actually, I think this guy has an existing business long before the county was there. And we're interfering with a business that's existed. And agriculture is something we take a great amount of pride in maintaining here. And so I need more information to make a decision, and so.
To let you know, the right to farm is that the person, the county, would say, yes, I'm okay with it. But the air district, the pesticide, I can't think of the initials, EPR, they are not okay with it.
Okay.
So you have to follow their guidelines. It's very, very strict, very strict. It's not, there's no wavering on it.
Tom?
I, you know, this is, to me, what's, you know, this fumigate thing is, you know, I know the state's regulating it, and it's very important in the commercial business. I'm wondering the long-term effects that that has on, you know, the trees. And maybe, I mean, this sounds a little far-fetched, but if the county is going to do an expansion here, maybe they should look into acquiring the buffer parts, you know, and having that as part of their property. So I mean, that might be something to consider, anyway.
Well, Ellie Cook is a very large commercial tree nursery. And they probably need all the land they have to farm what they have. So it's not fair to ask them to do that.
Well, he mentioned it.
Wayne? Could you put that map up there again, Dana, please?
Yes, Chairman Whitlatch, we do have one person who would like to speak on behalf of the project.
Okay, sure.
Which item?
So that, the new portion of, of this project is?
The new portion is the southern half.
Right there, okay. So the ag commissioner's office, and I think animal control is over.
They are, I'm not sure exactly where they're located.
That parcel, then, everything to the east of that is what he's fumigating, correct?
And to the north and to the, I farm trees inside of that.
So what are you doing now for the folks that occupy those buildings?
Not fumigating there.
You're not?
That's what he said.
Is that true?
That's true.
You're not? And how long have you not been fumigating there? You know what, I want to stop this right now because all the. Can I finish my question, please? No, I have to bring him to the microphone because he's answering your questions and we can't hear him, okay? Being recorded, please. Thank you.
I think you closed the public testimony.
I'll open it up again.
Up until recently, I've been able to avoid fumigating those sites due to crop rotation. Now I'm to the point where I'm back on those places with the certified crops. So it's, it's time to put them into play. I've also, my acreage has shrunk. I was farm, I own 600 acres. I own the site to the east, I own the site to the north, and I own the site to the northeast of that 40 acres. We've been impacted on fumigating there for a number of years. In the past, I was able to fumigate the site to the northeast with methyl bromide by taking 11 passes through the field to do it. That means three weeks to do 40 acres, which is a long time and a very expensive process because of the repeated trips out the fumigation company had to make. I'm not able, I could do, I could do it on this site, except it would take 13 passes through the 40 acres to do it and mitigate it. So it's, it's a big added expense on our part, plus the fact that I wouldn't be able to get on the ground for quite a bit afterwards, and it just isn't practical, which is why we went to the Telone, which only had a 300-foot strip out of one side there next to the animal control site. But as we go on and you add more sites there, it becomes more problematic. And the rules are in the process of changing on Telone. I don't know what they'll be. I know what they're proposing. It could be anywhere from a 100-foot buffer zone to a 700-foot buffer zone, which would wipe out your whole site just about, and it's not practical for you. I understand that the site needs to be there. I'm not opposed to putting the fire station there. Just asking that it be done in a manner that allows me as much room as possible for these mitigations as we do this. This is the only thing I do that causes a problem. The rest of my spray programs are rather mild. This one happens to be fairly regulated.
Thank you. Well, thanks. So I want to continue my question. So you would, if you want to resume on that parcel next to the existing parcel, the, the north half of that, that's already there, that's, that's going to impact those folks right away, correct?
One to the very north of the project, I cannot fumigate anymore.
Can we have the site map, please? Could I see that so I could understand what's going on? Oh, the 300-foot map. There you go.
You, well, it's actually divided, well, actually, the site just to the very north of the, the site map there, I cannot fumigate anymore. Because of all the people, there's a, because of all the occupancy in the front part there.
Across the 256.
The north of 256, yes.
And then you can't do it to the east of that site either, right?
I can, if the, I could with this one product at the moment by leaving a 300-foot strip out next to the county ag commissioner's office. If you add more buildings there, that strip becomes longer and deeper and with rule changes. I'm just trying to avoid conflict with my neighbor in the future.
Oh, and the new, the new half of the site, you want everything, if you can, if we can move it to the west?
Much as possible. Well, I, all occupied structures to the west half of the site would probably be as much mitigation as I could expect on the thing from this agency.
I understand now, thank you very much. Any, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll now hear from the county.
Good morning.
Public hearing is still open, so.
Thank you. Good morning, Kristin Bennett, Capital Projects and Facilities. If I could go back to the site map, the master plan? As mentioned, the master plan is still underway, the definition of the site. But what we have proposed so far is that the ponding basin, the drainage basin, would be on the furthest east. And it does traverse the entire site, so there would not be any construction or building occupied there. The next two blocks are auto storage, either for the sheriff's secured storage or expansion of road yard or motor pool equipment. The lower block is for a training place for fire. And those would not be occupied. Those little squares indicate things such as a burning, burnout site or cars or such as that. And that would only be used possibly once a month. It would not be an occupied site and could easily be operationally timed out. I don't have the dimensions. As you continue on the site to the west, the first building that could be occupied is a warehouse. And so it would not have anyone assigned to it. It would be a storage facility, again, with onsite operations. We could easily address any spray issues or fumigation issues. As you continue west, we're looking at, on the southern piece, this would become the, the fire admin. So that would be an occupied space. But you can see that's at least midpoint of the property or not. The northern half of that is the transit yard and the, what would be a bus barn and, and building. So it would be considered occupied. But I think we could easily make up the buffer through the drainage basin and the parking lots that are proposed on that site.
Thank you, Kristin. Always nice to see you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may also make a statement.
Sure.
In light of the very valuable information provided by staff and the director of Capital Facilities, it seems to me, as it presently stands, that the property owner does not seem to be in any kind of serious impairment of his use. So what I would suggest is that we move forward, So what I would suggest is that we move forward, but add a condition that prior to final site design, that staff meet and confer with the adjacent property owner in order to reach, try to reach a reasonable accommodation. That way, the project can go forward, the public policy objectives by several different agencies can move forward and yet will meet and confer before final site dan, site design is transacted.
I agree with that.
That seems pretty reasonable to me.
I sure would like to see it come back to us. I mean, because it needs to go through some.
The only thing you can also say is, as he has said, we don't know what changes. They might, they might make such a broad change that he's not going to be able to fumigate that site at all.
Right. Well, the, on the Dal, on the Dal site right now, I just Googled it and, you know, the, the EPA is offering, they're suggesting now monitoring programs for when, you know, sites are fumigated, that someone has to be out there to measure the air quality. So, I mean, that's not a Tulare County regulation yet, but it certainly could be down in the future, so, down the road. So I, you know, it's something to really be concerned about. There's no doubt about it.
And ju, just for the record, so that you understand, we appreciate the concerns that have been expressed by the adjacent property owner. But as it presently stands, if the regulation has not been adopted and is in effect, it can't be considered.
We're still thinking that at some point, this, even after everybody agrees, it should come back to the planning commission for us to know, know what's going on. It gives some sort of final stamp of approval.
What we could do.
We did conditionally approve it, but.
But we could, you could approve it conditionally today and once the final site design has been transacted, we could bring it back to you for a, a report and comment, but we'd like to move the project forward today.
I'm okay with that. And the applicant, I mean, app, the neighbor seems to be okay with that, so. If, if there's enough discussion, we've talked it to death, would someone like to make a motion that we approve it conditionally, that be brought back to us so they can move ahead? Nancy, you're the farmer, so.
No, no, the way I've characterized it is that we would add a condition of approval that before site design is transacted, we would meet and confer with the property owner to try to reach a reasonable accommodation. That's one. The other aspect is that, um, we would bring back a, a, the final site design as a report, not for review, approval, public hearing, consideration, so forth. This is it today.
I don't like that, so. But anyway, someone like to make a motion?
Well, Mike, uh, Mike, you're going to add it into the conditionally approved special use permit? Is that what you want to add, the condition?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the condition specifically?
Uh, that, that it be brought back, uh, or that the, uh, uh, the, the final site design will be, uh, in concert with the design of the facility for both the, uh, the neighbor and for the county.
So that ensures the regulations are followed in terms of the buffer zones and where the buildings are put.
Well, I don't know, because that's why I use words which, which do have meaning in the sense that, and let me say it again. We would respectfully suggest that the condition of approval be added that reflect this language, that before the final site design is completed, county staff would meet and confer with the property owner to try to reach a reasonable accommodation. The word reasonable cuts both ways. I mean, if the property owner, for example, is being unreasonable, we don't go there. But on the other hand, if we're being unreasonable, we don't go there either. So it, it's, it's a term of art that's acceptable, that allows reasonable flexibility in the future and yet we're not ignoring it today. There, there is an opportunity to discuss it. Now, the other aspect is that we'll bring this final site plan back to the planning commission, but not for review and reapproval. It would be for report and consideration because then that would needlessly extend the process and interfere with six public agencies here.
Nancy, you're the largest farmer here, so.
I, you know, I totally sympathize with the neighbor and I'm, I'm just a little confused as what this condition would even do. That's, I guess that's, I'm confused.
Let, let me explain. What the condition would try to accomplish is that before the fight, this final site design was completed, we would sit down with the property owner and see if we could design the buildings in such a way that there wouldn't not be an impairment with his operation. Is that reasonably understood? Okay.
Yeah, he's just bringing, he's bringing the property owner in to the final design process and, and then they're all going to concur on that site plan design as, as acceptable to both.
Receive a report.
And presentation, right.
And then it would come back to us for final review.
But final site design normally does not come back to you.
Right.
Only the preliminary.
Right.
We have no say so. It's a done deal. Whatever they have agreed upon, they're just going to advise us of what they agree.
Yeah.
Right.
The applicant okay with what we're talking about? I'm, I'm more concerned about your farming operation. Please come back up. This is, I closed the public hearing, but I just want to make sure you're in agreement that, uh, what's about to happen, we will lose, we will have no more control. It'd be an agreement between our staff and you.
So I understand that what has been suggested is that we tried, we, meaning Ellie Cook Company, tried to reach a reasonable accommodation with the county and the site design, design as it goes forward. That may mean that they're willing to move a building a little bit, may mean that I have to do something a little different on my side, but I'm willing to discuss it with them. I'm not here to kill the project, by all means.
Okay.
But I think it's needed.
If you're okay with it?
I'm okay with it, yes.
Thank you so much.
We're going to move ahead with the decision. Okay? Someone like to make a motion, please? Thank you. The public hearing's closed.
Again?
I still, you know, to me, I think, you know, the whole idea in the buffer zones is, is to protect the public. And I don't see them being represented between these necessarily and, you know, trying to reach an agreement, so I, I can't support it.
Will somebody make a motion, please?
I'll make this a motion that we adopt the mitigated negative deck consistent with CEQA and adopt the mitigated monitoring and reporting program for a special use per PSP 13057 with the change of the conditions of approval, that the site plan be reviewed with the staff and the, the neighbor to, um, try to accommodate each other's needs.
And sir, your name again is?
David Cox.
David Cox. Well, for the record, David Cox and Ellie Cook is the neighbor.
Well, that'll come on the second, on the second, the special use.
Um, yeah, you're probably right. I put that in the wrong spot, didn't I?
All right. The mitigated negative deck first.
The mitigated negative deck is the proper, uh, document here and to adopt the mitigated monitoring reporting program.
Do I have a second, please?
A second, the motion.
Roll call.
Tom?
Yes.
Billy's?
Yes.
Elliot?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
Wulacz?
Yes.
Iljana?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll go to the second one.
Okay, now let's try it again. This is to conditionally approve the special use permit PSP 13-057 and adopt the resolution establishing findings and conditions of approval for the project to include a change in the conditions that the staff and Ellie Cook Company come together before this final site plan is adopted.
Is that clear?
Well, I, 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 yeah. What it is saying is, um, as a condition of the approval, before final site design, county, the county and the property owner by name, uh, will meet to reach a final site plan design.
Is that clear? I want a clear motion, okay? This is not clear yet.
Aren't you both going to agree on what, what it is that you want?
Oh, no, let, let me restate the line.
I can't.
Um, the condition of approval would be that before final, the, or the final site plan, uh, design is completed.
Right.
County staff and the property owner, and we'll articulate the name of the property owner, will meet and confer to try to reach a reasonable accommodation regarding that plan. That gives both sides reasonable flexibility.
Is that your motion then?
Yes, my mo, my motion is what Mr. Spata has stated.
Let me say, there is a duty to meet. That's very good for both sides. And secondly, there's a duty to try to reach a reasonable accommodation. That is the best of all worlds.
Okay.
So the word, so the word accommodation is what I, what I left off.
Second, please.
Second to that motion.
Okay, roll call.
Tom?
Yes.
Billy's?
Yes.
Elliot?
No.
Yes?
Yes.
Wulacz?
Yes.
Iljana?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Thank you. I hope we accommodated you. Okay, have a good day. Director's report, planning director update, number six.
First of all, let me thank you. That was, that was a very good discussion and conclusion. My compliments.
It goes along good with moving things ahead like we want to do here.
We actually persuaded you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, that's my Christmas present.
Oh, thank you. That's lovely for a Rolex watch.
In, in any event, let me be very brief. Uh, let me say happy holiday to all of you. We appreciate all the excellent work that you have done in order to carry out the objectives of the county. Uh, we hope we've been helpful and valuable to you in providing what you need. Um, let me say for next, um, we have a public hearing or meeting scheduled on the 11th of December. It will be a fairly good-sized agenda, uh, so please show up. And, uh, we have two presentations. One will be by our economic development manager, Mike Washam, who will go through a fairly detailed agricultural value chain study that was completed by the economics department of Fresno State, which will be very valuable and it's the foundation of really moving forward with our economic development program. So that, that is an excellent report. You'll have the study, you'll have the PowerPoint. It's chock full of great information. Secondly, um, someone who you know very well, Ben Kimball, the deputy executive director of TCAG, will also be giving a presentation to giving you some highlights and updating of various activities involving the county and TCAG. So, uh, there'll be a number of public hearings as well as two very important reports for you on December 11th, which will be our only meeting, uh, for the rest of the year. So thank you.
I'd just like to go on the record that there was the largest mistake you've ever made letting Ben Kimball go. But it was his decision, not yours.
He may come back someday.
Yeah, that's right.
That's true.
Never say never.
We have times you leave to come back.
You always have the last word. You do well with that, so thank you.
We had his presentation and three others that he's going to do here and he really enjoys his new job. He's having a good time.
He's a very nice man, very qualified.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Confession?
Oh, are, are you through?
Yes, sir.
Spata, just, I just wanted to report to the, uh, to the commission. Uh, Mr. Spata, did anybody from the staff or the county go, attend that overdraft, uh, groundwater overdraft seminar that was held down in Tulare here, uh, a week, about a week and a half ago?
I'm sure either Mr. Raper or somebody else did attend.
Okay, I didn't see anybody there from the county. I attended on the thing and, boy, it was an eye-opener. Um, without going into a lot of detail and, uh, the presentation is available on CD if somebody needs to get it. I've got the information, I believe. But, uh, it boils down to, um, we're going to have to get our head out of the sand on this overdraft, uh, thing because, uh, it's not sustainable. And they, they believe we pulled out about 2 million acre feet above what was recharged. Now, we've had three years of drought and so that's probably not typical, but it happened. And, uh, I, I hate to say it, from, but, but from the people and what the consultants are saying, it says, if, if we don't put a model together and put a plan together on how we're going to, uh, address this overdraft situation, the state's going to come in and they're going to put a one, one-size-fits-all on everybody that may not like it. Uh, but we need really, John's been after this for as long as he's been on here, is we need a, a model and we need an inventory of what, what our water sources, our groundwater sources are so that we can at least start. And I don't think we've got a cure to the project, but I think we've got to show the state that we're, we're doing something and we're addressing it and we're aware of it and we're just not pulling up the well driller and drilling a well and pumping more, more water out of the ground.
An automatic permit?
Automatic, yes.
Automatic permit. I don't, and if our retired.
Those days are gone and be honest with you, uh, because it's happening in many other counties. Uh, they're talking about the possibility of adjudicating this water. And we will be farming much less ground if that's the case, because you will be allocated a certain amount of water out each well every year.
Jim Winton covers the area that has the worst water in Tulare County. Do you have any comments, Jim?
Very good.
Well, you're close.
Jim is 30 years old. It's hard to live in the water for 20 years.
Must be in the water.
So they, they addressed, uh, the, uh, water contamination by overdrafting it and, and getting, uh, they're claiming that if you're pulling some of this bitter water out, um, that lesser quality water is intruding and coming into those areas and it's, uh, reducing the quality of the wells, water in, in these wells. And, uh, the only solution really is to stop pumping or reduce pumping and increase recharge. Uh, we've got to figure out ways to get that water. Uh, there are wet years that we fill up that whole doggone Tulare lake bottom. And by that time, the water's out of our hands and of course it's sitting on that corncut clay and it just doesn't perk very well down there at all. We need to have, uh, ponding basins. We need to make arrangements with people, farmers that are on, uh, that are on the river. And on years that we have got plenty of water, we need to somehow compensate them so that we can put that water on their land and push it down into the ground. But these are things that they're talking about we're going to have, have to do. Uh, I'm not saying that that's the way to do it, but we have to start to address it. We just can't sit here anymore. It's just not going to go away. If, and if we don't, this, somebody's going to come in and it's not going to.
County up, up at the northern part of California that is judicating right now, um.
Is it Napa County that way?
I, it's not Napa.
Christine?
I, I know the, all the, all the, uh, the high desert in Kern County, all that's adjudicated. All those wells are adjudicated up through there. You bet. Um, I think, uh, Ventura County is, if they're not, they're, they're really, they've got, they've got, we think we've got big issues here. They've got huge issues. Uh, we had talks from people from, uh, Metropolitan Water District coming in on what they have to do. Uh, they're pumping water down there as well as taking water that we've got here. Uh, they're recycling their water. They're, they've got issues with, uh, saltwater intrusion coming in on, on deals. So, uh, compared to them, all we have to do is just get our ducks in a row and, and do what we should have been doing all along and that's just recharging this water and just not letting it go, get away from us. So, they were saying that the chances of an onstream storage syst, uh, uh, up in the, on the mountains here, it's not going to happen. The politics and the state aren't, it's not going to happen. There won't be, uh, anything onstream. If there, there might, it's going to be all offstream kind of stuff if, if, if we can get it done. But they won't be damming up the streams. There won't be any temperance flats. It's just probably not going to happen. And so, at the other, in the same vein.
Anything nice to say?
The chances of getting, no, not really. The chances of getting additional sources is, uh, not real good. Now, they've got the bond measure running for those twin tunnels to go underneath the delta. That hasn't passed and there's a lot of, that's got to go for the people and of course, people may not pass that. Uh, they're sick and tired of these bond issues where they're.
We never finished the California water project. That's, that's the start with the funds.
There was a lot of things that we'd never finished, never got the peripheral canal. There was a whole bunch of things we tried to do to get additional resource or sources, but, uh, uh, the, the odds of getting additional sources are not good. We're going to have to take what sources we've got. We've got to, uh, we've got to clean our water better than what we're doing here and our, and all our treatment plants and we need to be able to put that water back underground clean enough so that the nitrates and other issues don't, don't hurt what the, we've got. But we've got to use that water again and again and again.
That report will be very timely from the, um, from Mike Washman, very timely because that report will tell us a lot about our ag income in the, in the, I think it's a state report, isn't it? Is it the state? Is it just a county?
It's, it's our report through the economic development office and the planning branch designed to do things. Well firstly, it's the foundation for our marketing plan, our target marketing plan. First, we wanted to see the entire value chain from beginning to end agricultural process, where the value is, what industrial sectors within the agricultural, uh, area are increasing or inclining and declining. So it really is a good roadmap of what is and where it's going in terms of agricultural value. And from, from, on that basis of information and evidence, you start to make decisions. Not only economic, but environmental, because you'll see what types of uses may, for example, in your case, Commissioner Diaz, are highly consumptive in water use. So this is a good background report that we commissioned to Larry County Economic Development so that we could have a basis of information to make rational decisions from an economic point of view.
They did mention, I forgot to earlier, that in areas, some areas in western Merced and Madera and Fresno County that, uh, the excess pumping that we've had to go to now because of the shortage of water, particularly on the west side and, and the fact that they're not letting much water go through that aqueduct for agriculture, uh, is that, uh, the, the land is actually subsiding over there and there are areas that have gone, have subsided as much as 20 feet.
Three rocks.
Yep. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And the big concern is now that some of that land, which had never flooded or been below flood grade now, is going to, the next time we have, and the other problem is that the, even the canals, the banks and the protection berms and stuff, they're sinking too. So the next time we have a huge rain and that San Joaquin bypass has to use it, there's a chance it's gonna go right over the top of that and then flood thousands of acres that never been, never had been flooded before.
And it ruins the groundwater.
It'll help there. There'll be lawsuits and then, yeah, after the lawsuits show up.
If I might say, in addition to the valuable highlight that you're giving, Commissioner, there are two more layers to this issue and that's water quality. Agricultural, in terms of irrigated lands, is going through a process to see what their contribution, if any, is to the quality of water. And then we have another layer through the housing element and through the water code to address disadvantaged communities. In particular, what is the state of groundwater quality to public water systems and private water systems. So it is quantity, but then we move to the quality of that quantity to see how much further regulation, if any, will be put on all users of that water.
Right. Agriculture uses 70% of the water in the state. So if there's gonna be cutback, guess who's gonna get cut?
What are we gonna eat?
Have to eat grass.
Well, John and Bill and I were at the California County Planning Commissioners Conference a couple of months ago and the theme was water. And one of the experts that wrote a book on, said, on water, said, "We don't need more water in California." Can you believe this now? This is the urban centers that are talking like this. Agriculture's consuming 50% of the water in the state. We don't need any more water.
But they're saying, we don't need more.
They had the cumulative charts with all the reservoirs in the state and it's topped out on the top. They said, "No more reservoirs. We've got plenty of water."
Well, what they were saying, though, part of that argument was there is enough water if it was, because all water's recycled.
If it was distributed.
Yeah.
It's not distributed.
That's right. All water's recycled. No matter if it starts from a cloud or goes down to the ground, it's recycled at some point. So if we were properly recycling all water, we actually have enough. And that's basically what the guy's premise was of his whole talk. And it was quite interesting because, I mean, they're not recycling it in all the cities yet either and we're not recycling it in the rural areas. So we've gotta get on the same page.
Well, farmers have been recycling water for years. They're recycling their water.
Well, yeah, but I mean, we're not, we're not recycling it as effectively as we can do. And then, like people, like that are not farming, you know, have a lot of water, which they're not using. I mean, we're still growing grass in residential lots and in rural housing, you know, it's, and we're watering all that landscaping for what?
We'll just drive down through Palm Springs sometime and take a look at where the water's going.
I know we like golf courses, but, you know, it's getting a little bit archaic, the water golf courses.
You're right.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I notice the grand jury isn't here today. And we're thankful for that and we're thankful for the food we have. Meeting adjourned.
Let's have a nice sex game.
I will, I will not be here at the next one.
Have a good one.
I'll be in Mexico.